The City It's Walton Work Session for January 23rd of 2023. Our first item on the agenda tonight is a presentation on the Washington County Supportive Housing Services Annual Report and Program Update. Welcome Jess. Come on up. Good to see you again.
Good to see you. Thanks for having us, Mayor. And City Council, my name is Jess Larson for the record. And I am the Supportive Housing Services Program Manager for the Department of Housing Services in Washington County, and I'm here with my colleague, Ally.
Hi, good evening. I'm Ally Alexandra Sheridan. I'm a program coordinator on Supportive Housing Services Team with Jess.
We're pleased to be with you to bring you this annual report of the new Supportive Housing Services measure. Though it's worth mentioning that the the program year ended in July or June 30th of 2022. So we are a full halfway into our second program year. But this report was prepared for our board in mid-September and then was just presented for Metro in December. So it's a bit dated and we'll try to give you some of the updates of of the program since the time that this annual report was concluded. So just by way of background, the Supportive Housing Services Program is the program resulting from a voter-approved measure from May of 2020 that resulted in two new taxes on high-income earners and high-grossing businesses that is generating approximately $2 to $200 million a year in the Portland metro area, distributed through the three-county continuum of care organizations, or those are the county homeless services departments, proportionately to each of those three counties, for the explicit purposes to end and to address and end homelessness and specifically chronic homelessness. So these are the programs that we implement to achieve that goal. And our first slide here is just giving you a kind of an overview of what we've learned in this first program year. It really was a building year in Washington County. Prior to these resources, Washington County had about $5 million per year that could be invested in shelters and outreach and supportive housing programs. And those funds were almost entirely from HUD Continuum of Care dollars. With this new revenue from the region's voters and taxpayers, we have grown our capacity to deliver $75 million per year in outreach, shelter, supportive housing, and other wraparound services. So it's a very big expansion of capacity for the Department of Housing Services for the county, but most especially for the service providers who implement these programs. Because they are agents of the service delivery. We have 22 organizations contracting with us, and they've had to build out the infrastructure, hire the staff, learn the programs in order to get ready to start realizing the impact of these new resources in our community. So a lot of work in creating standards, in procedures and programming, and building up that technical assistance and capacity for our organizational partners in the first program year. Here's a quick kind of how that network of providers works. There are over 20 of them. In the first program year, there were six culturally-specific program providers. Now we have, sorry, four, and now we have six contracting with us. And they all provide a myriad of services depending on their expertise and preferences. So some provide shelter and outreach program services, others provide housing-focused programs, some provide all of them. And then they work across the system with one another so that they can help individuals ask access services with the organization where they're going to best be served by the programs they are eligible for and need access to. And so as a demonstration, we have this lovely story from Yessenia, one of our partners at Family Promise of Greater Washington County. She's working with a young boy, a part of a family she helped to serve here, whose mother was pregnant and homeless and needing help with prenatal care, some behavioral or mental health services, plus getting housing and having temporary shelter. And so she was able to work across that system with all of those service providers to connect that mother to all of those services and ultimately help them move into housing. So that's a quick overview, and I'm going to pass the baton to Ally to get you into the details of the programmatic outcomes.
Thanks, Jess. So a little bit about what we achieved in year one with our program. So we launched really what I would call our signature program of the measure, which is our Housing Case Management Services, HCMS for short. And that's partnered with what we call our Arla voucher. So the HCMS is the wraparound targeted case management support that these case managers are out providing our participants. And then Arla is really kind of like a housing voucher, if you will. That's the rental assistance coupled with this voucher. So in our first year, we were able to place 305 formerly homeless households in permanent and supportive housing. And I'll just note, so Jess mentioned that we've had some updates since the close of our first program year. That as of January 2023, we have 1,000 people have been placed through our program in 600 households. So this is a look at the capacity of the HCMS program. And so you'll notice the darker green shading is new households that have been placed each year, and then the lighter green are households that are supported in sustaining those housing placements. And so just one thing to note here that early in our program, so where we are now, you'll see that the bulk of our programming is focusing on supporting new placements, so providing that housing navigation and getting folks into units. Whereas in the next two to three years, our capacity will really be shifted to supporting households and sustaining those placements. And then the annual operating cost for this program will be about $33 million when scaled. So some expansions that are already underway as we're in our second year are the Rapid Rehousing Program. And this is a program really designed for folks that are what we call Population B, so they're not experiencing long-term chronic homelessness. But maybe it's a one-time episode of homelessness that's economic in nature, or they're unstably housed. And then also we have our landlord liaison program. We recognize that landlords are our partners as well. And so this program is really geared towards building those relationships with landlords and providing support for landlords that are working to house our participants. And then next we have the Aloha Inn, which is a permanent supportive housing site that's set to open next month. And that's 54 units of permanent supportive housing. And those are geared for folks that have experienced long-term complex homelessness and really have complex barriers to stability. And then our goal in program year two is to house and support 900 additional households through these interventions in the scaling of HCMS that we just talked about. So this is another snapshot of a story of a participant who's accessed our program. So this is Kanita. For years, Kanita struggled with substance use and experienced homelessness. And about four years ago, she got clean and sober and moved into a transitional housing site with her husband and children who you see here. And so just a few months ago, Kanita was able to access housing through the HCMS program we talked about and moved into a permanent unit. And so just a quick snapshot of her story, it's great to wake up in your own house and know it's just you and you don't have to worry about anyone else to know that you're okay and you're going to be okay. So moving on to talking a little bit about our shelter capacity. So our year one goal was to build out 100 new year-round shelter beds, which we achieved. And you can see the breakdown here through our Bridge Shelter Site in Hillsborough, which houses 60 households, adult-only. Our Bridge Shelter Site in Forest Grove operated in partnership with Centro Cultural, also called Casa Amparo. And that's specifically for families with children. There's 20 units. And then a Congregate Adult-Only Site in Tiger operated in partnership with Just Compassion. And then talking a little bit about our access programs. So we also, so this is, a lot of this work again is underway, but these are our targets for year two. So we will add 40 Bridge Shelter Beds in Tiger that will be targeted to serve families, 30 Village Pods in Hillsborough, which are Conestoga-style huts. This is one of our alternative shelter sites. And then an additional 150 winter shelter beds, which are seasonal, but dispersed across the county to have geographic representation. And then we've also invested in a new outreach worker system. So this is in partnership with eight community-based organizations and funded to have 16 full-time outreach workers who are providing services, really focusing on getting folks connected into housing. But with services geographically distributed, you see here the, this photo on the right is actually our outreach services map of our providers and their jurisdiction where they're doing outreach. And then most recently launched a $10 million Shelter Capital Fund for organizations that are interested in developing shelter sites. And so again, this is a snapshot of our shelter system capacity over time. So you see, for instance, on the left side of the chart, in the 2020 to 21 year, really the bulk of our shelter capacity was only temporary winter shelter, if you're familiar. Really before our measure, there wasn't any permanent year-round shelter capacity, particularly for adult-only households. So as we scale over the next two to three years, you'll see that our system will become less reliant on temporary winter shelter and really have a diverse portfolio of alternative shelter sites, congregate sites, bridge shelters, and then maintain some of that winter shelter capacity. And I'll hand.
Could you provide a definition of bridge, congregate, and alternative shelters?
Yeah, so congregate is when folks don't necessarily have their own room, but they're living kind of in a larger space. And then our Bridge Shelter is really, that's designed to provide up to 120 days of shelter. And it's for, so folks accessing Bridge Shelter will come in with their case manager and really start the housing navigation piece. And the goal is to bridge them into permanent supportive housing. So they would move from shelter into their permanent unit.
And they're motel-based primarily.
So those are the examples of motels that, excuse me, agencies are purchasing and running on behalf of the county.
That's right. That's right. And then the alternative shelters so far are the Conestoga Huts that Ally mentioned. There'll be a couple different varieties of outdoor shelters type spaces. And then perhaps safe parking programs too. So alternative ways people can access shelter. Oh, okay. So moving along and kind of in keeping with our annual review of the work, one of the important objectives of this program is to ensure that these new resources invested in ending and addressing homelessness are also advancing equity in, by way of who is served by these programs. So please don't worry about knowing all the numbers on this table here, but it's meant to demonstrate how we do an equity analysis, understanding who is served by our programs, who's waiting to be served by our programs, who experiences, lives below the poverty line in Washington County, and then the general population of Washington County. And we have that data by each race and ethnicity and continually observe how our programs are doing at meeting the understood and the anticipated need for housing and shelter services in Washington County by each race and ethnicity. The objective is to be able to disproportionately over-serve, if you will, households that come from communities of color so that we can correct for historic disparities in access to housing and similar programs. So an ongoing analysis and the data from our first year found that we're generally keeping, you know, generally on target. And the data is very young. We only had 305 households that were served in the first year. So we have to keep evaluating this and fine-tuning it. We are also observing that our culturally-specific service organizations are especially great partners in helping to achieve this programmatic goal. Here's a quick snapshot of our budget in the first program year. So last year, we budgeted for $38 million and expended $16.1 million. It's important to note, we allocated all of those resources, but because so many of our partners were hiring and it took time to train, train up, and then of course it takes time to house people, we weren't able to fully expend that allocated budget. So those funds roll over into the new program year. This program year is budgeted with a $50 million budget, though we are expecting to receive more than $50 million. The program is collecting revenue more quickly than initially anticipated. And so as the program grows, we have unspent funding that gets carried over and becomes one-time funding investments, which is an important need for the program because as we've been sharing, in Washington County, we're building up so much infrastructure and need some of these capital investments to be able to provide shelter. This is part of the reason why we've relied on winter-only shelter for so long is both a limitation of funding, but also a limitation of access to year-round shelter facilities. So as Ally mentioned earlier, a $10 million shelter fund was released, I believe, two months ago. We actually have eight applications that we are viewing right now, and we're confident we're going to spend at least those 10 million, if not more. We're also looking to acquire some additional hotels that might be converted into permanent supportive housing, similar to the Aloha Inn that Ally was previously describing. An additional capital investment will be made into access centers, places that people who are unsheltered or seeking services can go day-of, find meals and showers and, and safe places to be, but also get connected to the system and on their way to receiving housing supports, whatever those might be. We're increasing our eviction prevention funding capacity right now as we speak. You're probably familiar with a lot of eviction prevention funding that was made possible through federal funding during the pandemic and is now going away. So with these one-time funds, we can kind of continue on that level of eviction prevention support until additional state or federal funds are found to kind of hold hold steady those households that are living on the edge, on the brink of homelessness. So there's a quick view on how some of those carryover or under-spent funding get invested to achieve the overall programmatic goals. And in conclusion, I think this is one of our last slides, just a review on our year one outcomes, achieving those 305 housing placements, hiring up 38 new workers, and increasing our shelter capacity by 100 shelter beds. We are well on our way to achieving our yet again ambitious goals for year two with over 300 of the, I think it's close to 300 of the 500 households housed so far to date. The new Rapid Rehousing Program is at about 75 households to date. So a slower launch, but we're hoping it will catch up in its quarters three and four. We're well on our way to reaching those additional 72 housing workers through the Outreach Program and the additional expansion of the two housing programs I just described. And we're, we're kind of about halfway on our permanent supportive housing goal, which is good because we're about halfway through the program here, with those 54 units coming online from the Aloha Inn and working to secure a few more. And then we've, it's hard to see on the slide, but it says 75 for our year-round shelter capacity goal in year two. And we have 70 of those 75 beds already in, in program, like they're already available. So we're confident we're going to be able to reach that goal as well this year. So that's where we're at, in conclusion of year one and also halfway through year two. Oh, and then to cap it all off, here's a lovely story from Colbert. He goes by Best Smile, Mr. Willis. He says, "To anyone who needs it, this program is where it's at. It's helped me change my life. I know I now have a new life and I'm able to take care of myself mentally and physically." So we find this work inspiring. We're grateful and excited to continue building out these important programs. And we're happy to continue to bring you these updates as an important city partner to Washington County. That's it. So we'll take your questions now, Mayor.
Questions for Jess and Ally. Workplace. Counselor Brooks.
Thanks for your presentation. When we're looking at Washington County, how many people are homeless?
It's an excellent question. It's challenging to answer. There are many ways we look into getting this data. So there's a mechanism called the point-in-time count. That's a required count of every continuum of care in the country, and it's actually point-in-time count week right now. So Wednesday is the day that the the count officially takes place. Last year, we had 808 people who were experiencing homelessness. That means, well, about half were living in our shelter programs or transitional housing, and the other half were living unsheltered. And that was the part of the count, if you will. We will wait and see what the data turns up for this year. It's the first regional count, and there's a change in methodology. So sometimes there will be changes both reflective of a change in the need, but also a change in how the count is conducted. But the count is never the, the best. It's, right? It's limited. So we also use coordinated entry data, which is the mechanism that receives need from multiple points of entry to, so people get assessed if they're experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness and then connected to the services they will need. And that's another place we can gather data. We have hundreds of households right now who are waiting for the programs we described tonight.
Okay. And then more demographic, I just have a couple demographic questions before I go into the rest of it. Appreciate the work. We talked about equity, but I just wondered, just plain gender-wise, do you have a basic percentage of men and men that are homeless?
It's an excellent question. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure that I can answer it. And we are actively working with our, as we're building out our permanent shelter capacity, looking into understanding the needs of women in shelter versus men in shelter. A lot of couples come to shelter and families as well. But there's definitely a majority of men seeking shelter, but a need for women-only shelter. So, but I'd be happy to get a better answer for you, counselor.
Yeah, I think a lot of times people have images of what homeless people are, are, and I think there's a lot more diversity, and especially in our community and a very silent thing, families and kids. Okay, then I had a question. It's exciting to hear about the outreach workers and especially that they're going to be located in specific. So I served on the LIP program that helped inform this. And the reason why I was selected was for geographical diversity. So of course, a lot of us are going to be concerned about accessible resources for people in our area. And having these outreach workers located near us is an exciting proposition in my perspective. And I'm curious for two things. Is, is there a way that they're going to be connected that we, that we can know and meet them and know who they are? And then the other one is there going to be specific data that comes through around our homeless population in our region and what they're finding out on the, in the community? Because then everyone's on the street, right? Hidden poverty in the suburbs and a lot of hidden homelessness here. So I'm just curious about creating some kind of a plan or robust way of helping communicate with city leaders like me so that I can have a better understanding of what's happening on the ground here and what's being done.
Great. And we would, we're always eager to continue those partnerships and provide any information that would be useful to you all in your roles, but also your staff and, and any of the partnership that can help bring better services to bear and more services to bear in Twelton. Your, the contracted outreach provider assigned to the Tiger and Twelton area is Just Compassion, and we would be happy to make a connection with your city staff to make sure that law enforcement in Twelton have access to, you know, the boots on the ground who are trained and that contract is designed to be responsive to the local needs that they, they, where they serve. So let's make sure we, we can make that partnership happen at least at the very start.
Thank you so much. And then I just have one more, and I'll let other people talk, but I just had one more off the top of my head. I went to a presentation from the OHSU and Medical Homeless Services that they're standing up now. And I'm just curious about how these two entities work together and collaborate and make sure that people aren't losing services from one end if they're utilizing services through their Medicare or however they're going to be doing it through the, you know what I'm talking about. Do you remember the program's name?
Housing Benefit Pilot.
Housing Benefit Pilot, yeah. Is there any, do you foresee any issues with that or?
You asked excellent questions. I'm going to see if Ally would like to answer this question.
Yeah, yeah. So we've had many conversations with HealthShare, which is ultimately steering that project as well and knowing that that housing benefit is limited in duration, whereas our services, or kind of, we talked about the, one of the cornerstones is HCMS. So really focusing on how do we bridge those folks that are accessing that temporary intervention and make sure that when needed, we're able to bridge them into our long-term housing support. So we've certainly had many ongoing conversations. It's a pilot that will like, will end in the next year. But also there's interest in partnering with a lot of the community-based organizations we contract with to roll our services out. So I think there's a lot of potential collaboration in the, in the future, but being mindful of how Medicaid can fund those housing interventions and how that's different from how we're funding interventions. So I think there's a lot of potential collaboration and also a lot of work to do.
All right. Yeah, because they, it seems like they want to stand it up, not just for it to go away.
Right. Yeah.
And I'm going to ask one more. I'm sorry, just with, with resources. So when I was in the field as a social worker, the waitlist for affordable housing was, they just stopped keeping track of it. And I'm just curious if we're in that same place again. And then for the prevention piece, I'm just wondering if we're going to have robust information in our courts and if there's advocacy pieces around, around eviction prevention so that people that, you know, haven't had as much experience with that kind of stuff, can we get some help?
Do you want to take one of those?
Yeah, I could speak, well, I'm, I'm not as well-versed in the eviction prevention piece, but I know there's some work been done, like for instance, the Beaverton Mediation Center to provide mediation services and partner closely with Community Action, which has been a large eviction prevention funder to kind of get the word out about those services and to also try and address some of the landlord pieces before we get to the, the point where we're doing eviction prevention. So there are some of those services that are standing up across the community.
Perfect. And I'm sorry, Counselor, I forgot. I think that's an excellent question. So essentially, all that we've described tonight and all the work that we do as the providers of our homeless services system in Washington County, we are the emergency room responding to the crisis of a lack of affordable housing options. And so there are multiple kinds of waitlists. There's housing choice vouchers, public housing waitlists, individual waitlists at various affordable housing buildings, and they're all waitlist. There's no place anyone can readily go access affordable or subsidized housing of any kind, anywhere in the region and rarely anywhere in the country. In general, we have funding nationally for one out of every five eligible households for affordable housing. So this is why we have a housing or a homelessness crisis in our communities because we just fundamentally underfund affordable housing. And so yes, people wait years and sometimes those waitlists are even closed and not even available. The housing that we're doing, and this is how homeless services have been designed in recent years since 2014 using this coordinated entry system, essentially prioritizes that weight based not on your number on the waitlist, but rather the need of your household, the risk and vulnerability of that household. So when we're focusing on providing, when we're providing permanent supportive housing, long-term rent assistance and wraparound supports and case management, we're focusing those very service-enriched house, housing placements for that highest need, most at risk or longest outside household. So it's a different homeless system than to the other waitlists. So definitely the, the two relate to one another.
I'm just wondering, like, because like you said with the emergency room, like where, when they go through their 180 days, where are they going to go? That's my question. Like when they go to permanence, where, where is that going to be? Like that's, I would have loved to have that answer when I was working as a social.
Well, so this is why we try not to have exit dates from our shelter programs because we don't want to exit any household back out to homelessness. Um, and in many of our our extra supported, like our bridge shelter programs, people are staying in that program while they're working with a housing voucher and getting back in. So so there's always sort of the long-term plan comes with the short-term plan. Um, but yeah, I'm, this is, people are waiting and will continue to wait until we're able to fully scale up these resources and really address our lack of housing um options in our community.
Very much. Thanks for the work, hard work.
Other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all your work. I just have two, a couple of quick questions. Um, I'm part of the Tiger Twelton Service Providers Network um that meets with Catherine West at the school district. And I hear Just Compassion and all the work that you're doing and um different places. They also talk about uh alternative um things for households to have just a um room to rent. And we've had people here, the mayor has brought people here to speak to that. But I wonder if you could really speak to how you um, what are the resources for kids and and or families in Twalatin? As closest I saw on the map was Bull Mountain, to keep our kids and their and their families in the same schools and nucleuses that that are the supportive systems or potentially risk factors that that they're in right now. So I'd love to know that. And I also wonder, what um is the trajectory for the prevention services that, I mean, six million dollars in housing prevention? I mean, you must have a plan as to to try to get the spigot to turn down a little bit. And I'm just curious what that might look like.
Um, I I will do my best to hazard an answer and also happy to follow up for further information. Thank you for the question. Um, so uh, we work with family providers specifically to um because they are much more expert at navigating both like the employment needs of parents um who are experiencing housing instability or homelessness and the educational needs of the kids in those households. Um, so um, sometimes our shelters um have Uber accounts to make sure kids make it to school or they um even come designed with a bus stop so that they the, there is like a special shuttle that comes to help pick up the kids from the shelter and get them to school. So there's all sorts of partnerships that are um designed um specifically to to make sure kids are making it to school even while they're surviving housing stability, instability with their parents. Um, I'm not sure that I can speak more specifically to how that um presents itself in Twalatin specifically. But um, we'd be happy to work on getting the family providers to kind of describe that in further detail. Um, and then, yes, uh, I I'm not sure I fully understood your question on prevention funds. Um, six million is about double of what the funding um per year. So we're looking at uh scaling from about six million to about twelve million annually in prevention funds in Washington County. That is previous to the COVID era of funding that really was in place because um so many households were suddenly without income and at risk for not to not be able to pay their rent. And so that's really changed since the end of the pandemic, um, in in that way, anyway, the pandemic that resulted in so much unemployment. Um, but still, there are so many households that live on the edge of homelessness because of the cost of housing and unstable unemployment or unstable employment. So um, this significant increase is going to make a big difference. But it's still um a a come uh first come, first served, like frankly, a mad rush at the beginning of each um month um when eviction notices are made and then people become eligible for that prevention. You have to bring your eviction notice in order to get your eviction funds.
So you, okay, so thank you for that clarification. So you have to actually be actively being evicted in order, so that doesn't feel like total prevention to me. So not to be, I mean, is there any upstream prevention plan then? Maybe we can talk about that another time. I'd love to learn more about that because I know SNAP benefits are changing. I mean, I know there's things happening in April first that'll impact increase. So so maybe I could follow up. Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, okay. I was actually thinking about the same, someone around the same question she had. We are reporting back to our constituents as part of connecting to our city. And yeah, I do like, I'd like to hear more about what the program or what are these funds doing here in Twalatin. So we can say this is what you're doing with the families are here in Twalatin that are experiencing the the hardship of paying their rent or um mortgage and staying in that place with that they have chosen to live in versus getting evicted, going through the whole process of being on shelter and then all the way back to that. So I think that will be interesting to learn about how do we keep these families in their, in the form that they have currently and helping them out with that um in in Twalatin. Uh, the other, um, so if you don't have that answer right now, then I guess the follow-up will be great. Um, the other thing that I was looking at the numbers of race and ethnicity and you ran through it a little fast. So can you help me understand the graphs that you have? It it says something like, for instance, it says Hispanic or Latin origin. Total serve, percentage of third serve, their total serve forty-one percent, percentage of unserved thirty-three percent. What does that mean?
Those are the households. Thank you, Counselors. Excellent question. Those are the unserved households would be the households who are in our coordinated entry system waiting for access into a housing program. So it's sort of like our known waitlist of need in Washington County.
But they're still kind of being served in one way or another or?
Well, they um, they've been assessed, if you will. They've had a phone call that um took all of their information. So we learned their race and ethnicity. We learned their income, their housing status, their need. Um, and uh, and they haven't yet been served by us. They're waiting for a callback.
Not waiting period that you.
That's right.
Okay, and then you said like, like if you go through the whole thing seventy-four, so if I see forty-one were assessed or thirty-three percent, forty-one were assessed, but only thirty-three, but thirty-three have not served, have been served yet. Is that what it means?
Not quite. Um, it is, it's, it's complicated. So um, of the households we've served of the three hundred and five households who got housed in the last program year. So all of this data comes from just um the data from last program year, which we um were in, in which we were able to serve three hundred and five households. So of those households, forty-one percent identified as Hispanic or Latino. Of all of the people waiting on our waitlist, thirty-three percent identified as Hispanic or Latino. Uh, the population in Washington County um that reports living below poverty, um, thirty percent of that population identifies as Hispanic or Latino. And then of the total population of Washington County, twenty-one percent identifies as Hispanic or Latino.
Okay, and I don't mean just that, right? I just picked it because it's easy for me to distinguish that, but it could be. I just, you ran through the whole number.
Yes, I did. I did. Yes. No, thank you for the excellent question.
Um, and this is on a different kind of question, but it is the big questions that I hear um about chronic homelessness. What, what is the plan? Is that part of this program of what um the people are paying? And what is, what is the plan of chronic homelessness? And I mean, like, people out in just on the street and trying to get into or like, what are we, what is the plan if that your program is being a part of? Because I know that it's a bigger issue than your, what you're providing, but are you doing anything with that, those funds?
Absolutely. So this program is specifically designed to focus on scaling up our emergency res- room response so that we can actually end chronic homelessness. Chronic homelessness um means, is defined with two conditions. Um, a household who's experienced repeated homelessness for times in three years or homelessness that's longer than a year. So oftentimes, when we're thinking about chronic homelessness, people have been outside for years, right? It also, the second condition is the household or the head of household or the individual that's a household of one um must have um a disabling condition. Um, in fact, most people who are experiencing chronic homelessness have multiple disabling conditions. Um, so this is a complex population to serve. Um, and this program is specifically dialed in to serve this population. There's a a nuance um in the measure that requires that seventy-five percent of the funding serve chronic homeless population and twenty-five percent of the funding serve upstream, preventing homelessness and other households who might be experiencing homelessness. That was the population A, population B um thing that Ally referenced. Um, so yes, we're very much focused on addressing the needs of chronic homelessness. And that's why we talk so much about the rent assistance coupled with the wraparound supportive services or the case management so that so that we make housing affordable, but also that we provide the the case manager, the person checking back, um, connecting people to mental health or recovery programs or employment programs or whatever it is that that each individual needs so that they don't end up back into homelessness.
And those are the, those are um part of that three hundred and something individuals that you tell.
That's right. So three hundred and five last year and an additional three hundred this year so far, households and a total of a thousand people.
Okay, thank you for uh explaining that.
Absolutely.
Other question.
Quick question. Um, I think all this work is very great and thank you for the work that you do. Um, so is there any additional work being done? Um, and I understand that there's, there is a population that will always need assistance for the, for the, the rest of their lives um based on the the criteria that you explained. Um, is there additional assistance um to get people out, supported on their, on their own? Like, what does that look like from bringing them from houselessness to supportive housing to then being able to support themselves on their own?
Such good questions. Thank you. Would you like to take this one?
Sure, I can. So what you're describing are a lot of the folks that that make up the population for the rapid rehousing, the population B who, again, the nature of their homelessness is economic one time. And so a a bit of the focus of the case management, the wraparound services through that program is to really focus on employment, education, getting folks um back into employment or into an educational program to really become self-sufficient because the goal of that program is not long, long-term support, but short to medium terms of support to help someone achieve self-sufficiency.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you for what you're doing. I do have a question in reference to your your demographics. You had said that you you highlighted this for us to know that you're making up for the inequities that were being done in the past. Can you explain that, how that works? And how, and why would we want to use that? Because I see here there's white alone, the numbers are pretty large. So that means if somebody's, this is an example, okay, just rough example. So how do you determine that? By race, on who needs the need? Because I'm, I don't understand that if the need is there, it doesn't matter what race you are. So I just want to know what what steps, what, how is that being managed?
Yep, excellent. Thank you, Counselor. It's a great question. Um, in fact, there's fair housing policies such that we can't outright benefit any one race or ethnicity over another race or ethnicity. So that is not the policy that we're implementing or how the programming is done. But there is recognition that many housing programs of past um were inaccessible to families of color or individuals, um, people of color, um, or created were intentionally inaccessible or created barriers that made it harder to reach those households. And in fact, I mean, housing itself comes with barriers through screening criteria, like requiring credit scores or um uh uh criminal history requirements. Um, when we know that people of color often are uh are targeted through law enforcement practices and have more interactions with law enforcement, so are more likely to have a criminal history. So there are lots of ways in which society exists and then gets um rolled up into uh screening practices um for housing that can result in disparate outcomes of who's able to access housing. So the way we mitigate that in our programming is we look at things like barriers to housing um and how we can help offset them, how we can train our case managers to help overcome denials to um uh housing applications so that they know how to work with landlords, give landlords incentives to work with our participants or um write letters of accommodation so that the household can be accessed by them. That's an example. And then we check our work through this equity analysis to see, are we actually being able to reach the households who have historically not been reached through government funding and government programs?
My follow-up is this, so we have a room full of people who have the need. There's black, there's Hispanic, there's white. So the white get looked differently than the black and Hispanic because of historical undeserved members or they're going to be looked at based on?
Yes, that's exactly right. So uh the uh, we cannot create, and we do not create any any um preferential access to a program based on race or ethnicity. What we can do is evaluate barriers to access and work to mitigate them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, wow, so many questions to answer. Um, I, well, I just want to say I appreciate Washington County is a big county and a lot to deal with. Uh, and and I would like to advocate that um we so often see that we're ignored here in the east part of the county. And especially, we know that a lot of our our homeless issue, our children that are couch surfing. Um, I'd like to uh reiterate what my fellow counselor said there. Um, and then my question to you is you've worked, I know you've worked with a lot of these um service providers and helped build them up. Do you have um plans to reevaluate the services they're providing and the job they're doing as you go along through this program?
That's an excellent question. And if you recall the first slide, the theme of this year has been training and technical assistance and support. The theme of the coming year is program evaluation and monitoring. Absolutely. We know that this is where we, I mean, it's part of the technical assistance and support our partners need is we, they need to know how they're doing and how they can do better and what we can learn from some organizations that have figured these things out. Um, and and ultimately for the voters' sake, um, and for for everyone's, um, all constituents' sake, we need to demonstrate outcome and impact with these public resources.
Just a handful left because a lot of them got asked already. So tying into Council President's last question, we have twenty agencies who are helping you implement this. Are they fairly dispersed across Washington County or is it like Council President alluding to, it's usually on the west side of this county. It's the nexus of all these services. How is the agency distributed?
That's an excellent question. I'm not sure that we've mapped, and this is something I'm gonna take note, map the like, um the front door address to organizations, though that might not fully describe their reach um and their ability to serve. But I think it is a good question for us to take back.
Their their reach would be good. I mean, just like, we've always got the example of the person who needs services from Community Action. It's a two-hour bus ride to Hillsboro.
Yes, yes.
Two hours each way.
Yes.
Versus someone who might be locally in Tiger, Twelton, Sherwood, there's a lot of time. And even if their offices are in Hillsboro, do they have an intake, you know, officer facility in this area? Or, you know, more, more interested in?
Exactly.
I I could just mention anecdotally, I actually came from the service provider side in Tiger prior to joining Washington County. But um Good Neighbor Center, which is in Tiger, is a partner, um Family Promise Twelton Valley, which I think Jess mentioned. And they partner really closely with the school district. New Narrative has a Tiger presence. They provide community-based behavioral health services. And then Just Compassion is also in Tiger. Um, so those are, I would say, most of our primary East County partners.
Uh, and kind into your review, the first time I gave this presentation, you were in the midst of the RFP process and all that good stuff. So is uh, when you go to reevaluate, will there be a new annual RFP? It's a continuous RFP to bring on additional providers to give you more capacity and also replace people who exit organizations that exit?
Yeah, um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the RFPQ, uh, Request for Programmatic Qualifications uh made eligible a hundred and sixteen organizations to provide these services in all three counties. So we actually are in the process of opening that again to help welcome anyone into the pool of eligible providers. But that is not the same as um uh receiving a contract. There are additional um procurement processes and evaluations um conducted by staff to um make sure that we are reaching geographic diversity, um service of the population. Uh, we were able to serve all of the different population needs in our system and other considerations. So uh, it's less about needing more providers and more about making sure we have providers who are achieving the programmatic goals and outcomes and the geographic and population. who are achieving the programmatic goals and outcomes and the geographic and population reach that is needed.
Last question, and the grilling was stopping you guys, is on the eviction uh, process. Uh, I saw a story recently in the news. Um, I don't know if it was here, it's the same situation all over the country where uh, having to wait for that eviction notice is, is an issue for some folks. Because the eviction notice is issued, then the tenant is now scrambling trying to get aid. And the timeline for that process is they've only had so many days, so they're out. And that back in the day during COVID, Community Action couldn't meet that need. And we actually had to do moratoriums in each city extending the eviction, you know, timeline. So if, talk to me about that process where, like, I think Maria or Council Hill, you were talking about, you know, why are we waiting for the eviction notice? Should we be doing something beforehand? But once the notice is hit or served, uh, is it done in a timely fashion that the clock doesn't run out and they're out in the street? Because their application got stopped.
Excellent question. And when we wanna keep evaluating and monitoring, what I can share with you is that, um, there were lots of bumps in the road in implementing the COVID-era funded eviction prevention through our community action agencies. So in Washington County, we have the name, the organization is called Community Action. But it's actually a system of distributing um, resources from the state to all parts of what, from the state housing agency to all parts of the state through these organizations that um, emerged as anti-poverty organizations decades ago. Um, and they're called our community action agencies. So Community Action is an organization by name that is providing the service as a community action organization for us in Washington County. And so they receive these eviction prevention funds and receive other eviction prevention funds um, from the state year over year. Um, through, through all the lessons learned and the struggle of that massive increase of um, eviction prevention funding, they have improved distribution and scaled up their staffing capacity to be more responsive and get those funds out on a timely manner. So that if a household has an eviction, they're going to have check-in hand in time to be able to ensure that eviction doesn't go through. Um, and this is something we need to make sure we continue to evaluate. And if um, Community Action Organization isn't able to be able to um, deliver on that commitment, then we'll, we'll look for additional organizations to help make eviction prevention resources available.
Is there any reason we have to wait for those to be served? Is that a legal thing or? I, I would think that the landlord would rather not go to that paperwork, knowing that he or she would get the money and begin the process maybe two weeks before. Is, is, is it, why is the, why we have to wait for the notice?
Yeah, I, I think this is an excellent question and one we need to continue to evaluate. Frankly, I believe it's been a decision made based on the way to um, to measure clear, specific need um, very quickly. Like without this rent assistance, this household is going to lose their housing. When there is so much need and there's so much complication to assessing the level of that need, the eviction notice serves as the mechanism to demonstrate um, that necessary action that's need to be taken. But there are all sorts of challenges with using that methodology because there's a lot of informal evictions that happen. People leave before they get the notice or, um, and, and so we, we, we need to continue investigating this. Very good question.
Any other question?
Um, just one quick question, also on the eviction notice and all that. And I'm very familiar how those, how that works. I refer nonprofit that was helping pay uh, rental assistance. So um, one of the things I used to kinda, I thought it was not the best. It was these people that are getting evicted, um, say they now all, if their rent was five hundred, now they owe a thousand dollars, right? They will only help them with like a percentage amount, like a hundred bucks.
Right.
But where were they gonna get the other amount in order for them to stay there? That was always a column that I had. And I couldn't understand why the organization could not help with, by paying the entire amount so they can start all over again and a fresh start for them. Instead, it was like, okay, we'll give you fifty dollars. That other organization will give you another fifty dollars so that, so it's just sending the person to like three, four different nonprofits to get that a thousand dollars to continue in their home. Why is that? Or what is, what is, I, I, I still don't understand it. It's been like twelve years.
Uh, thank you, councilor. It's an excellent question. I think that's a demonstration of a failed practice that I hope we don't continue to implement anymore. I think um, that approach might be, might be chosen by smaller entities who have a limited amount of funding and they wanna serve a number of people rather than resolve um, the, the need, the need for a fewer group of people. The rent assistance program that we are implementing in partnership with a community action um, pays the full month's rent. And as much as three months' rent if there is a continued need and will also cover any arrears or any other um, fees or uh, that have been assessed to fully resolve what is driving that eviction and hopefully prevent it from happening. Um, and to ensure that no one has to keep knocking on other doors to get that problem resolved.
Yeah, well, thank you because um, in fact, one of the nonprofits that you mentioned is one of those nonprofits you're working with. So I was really, when you mentioned that's the nonprofit you're working with, I'm like, wait, that's not what I remember from all that. I, I hope you keep them accountable. I, I, I know whoever keeps their nonprofit accountable, make sure that I, I think that, you know, they're being, that they're serving the people that they, to keep them in their home versus, you know, going once they're out, like you said, when, when, before they get the eviction, before they get, some people leave and then they just wander off and then they start the process. And they keep them in their home, it's always important for me.
Thank you.
Thank you both for coming tonight. I knew we need an hour. Presentations before, but thank you. Walton, have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thanks for having us.
All right, that brings up to our, our second item, which is the Climate Action Plan Update Engagement Role and Strategy Development. This is Maddie and Nick, welcome.
You again. Good to see you. Mayor Councillors, good evening. Uh, Nick Westendorf, Deputy Public Works Director, joined by Maddie Cheek, Management Analyst. We are going to give you an update on our most recent round of engagement. And then we're looking for some feedback on our draft strategies for the Climate Action Plan. With that, I will give it to Maddie.
All right, you stole my thunder on the title slide. So, hi, um. My name's Sunny Cheek, I'm a management analyst, uh, like Nick said, and we can just roll to the next slide. Oh, it's this side. Okay, I got it. All right, um, so a quick overview of what we'll be talking to you all about tonight. Um, I wanted to give a little bit of an overview on the project timeline, um, since it's been a bit since we checked in. Um, and then we'll talk about fall engagement, which includes public engagement focused on folks who live, work, and play in Tuolton. Um, and stakeholder engagement, which talks about some of those uh, bigger like lever puller type organizations. Um, we'll do a quick reminder of Tuolton's greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal, cause that sets the stage for some of the strategies that will appear in the plan. Um, and then we're hoping to spend the bulk of the time um, talking about some of the strategies that might appear in the plan and also get your feedback on those. So we've got a few discussion questions as well. And then we'll wrap with next steps and chit chat about the strategies. Okay, so in terms of project timeline, um, at, to this point, we've conducted research on Tuolton's future physical conditions and what it might feel like here as climate changes. Uh, we've also finished our greenhouse gas emissions inventory and we understand where our sources of emissions are in Tuolton. We've talked with stakeholders about adaptation and mitigation uh, in Tuolton. And we've also gathered feedback from the public on some potential strategies and actions. So now we're at the point where we're doing some in-depth analysis of some of those strategies to see both how much they cost and what their impacts could be. Uh, and then we're also working on writing the draft plan, so. Uh, we recently wrapped up phase two of engagement, which focused on, like I said, getting feedback on draft strategies and actions um, from the public and from our stakeholders. In terms of public engagement, we had a variety of opportunities for folks to engage with us, uh, which included an online open house, three in-person workshops, two uh, in-person tabling events. One was held at the Tigerd Farmers Market, um, and one was held at the Tuolton Public Library. And then also for Latino Business Network meetings. Uh, most of these events were available in both English and Spanish, and we engaged over two hundred and fifty folks throughout this course of engagement. Uh, we did a lot to promote all of these opportunities as well. So uh, via print, we had mailed postcards to all businesses and residences in Tuolton. Uh, we posted flyers at businesses and uh, some restaurants around town. And we also put up some A-frame signs in parks. We did quite a bit of digital outreach as well via social media, emails to our project listserv, uh, and updates to our project website. Um, our Spanish language engagement consultant did phone calls to Spanish-speaking community members to invite them to participate in both the online open house and the workshops. Um, we also did some in-person recruitment as well via the Chamber of Commerce, uh, the Winita Poll Center's Earthwise Crew. Um, and then some of those Latino Business Network meetings like I had mentioned. Okay, so in terms of key themes that came up from this round of engagement, uh, there were three things that stuck out to us the most. So first was an interest in reducing emissions and a desire for the city to do more to address climate change. Um, a lot of folks expressed that they really do wanna take action and they just were kind of not sure quite how to do so. Um, and then also talked a lot about wanting to be in community with others doing that. And that came up a lot in the Spanish language engagement as well. Um, second was a desire for the city to provide more information related to how residents and businesses can respond to climate change and reduce their emissions. Let me look at my notes here. Sorry about that. Uh, there was overall interest in the city hosting a recurring climate action fair. That was something we heard a lot about. And folks really wanted to attend to learn about what resources are available, how they can reduce emissions, and also how they can um, gather supplies for extreme weather events. And then lastly, participants expressed, expressed interest in learning about and having access to financial help or incentives to offset the costs of reducing their emissions and adapting to climate change. Since things like installing solar panels or a heat pump in your home or weatherizing even can be um, cost prohibitive for folks. Um, so one idea that came up, for example, during the small business workshop was the idea of a green incentivization program for small businesses um, to help them kind of move in the direction um, and get recognized for that. Okay, um, so similar to how the plan will be structured, we split engagement in terms of adaptation and responding to climate change and then mitigation, which is reducing emissions. Um, for the mitigation section, participants were asked how they would be willing to help reduce their emissions um, when they're at home or at work, when they're traveling, and then also when they're out shopping and buying things. Um, in general, folks were really interested in taking actions. You can see some of the boards up there with all the stickies on them. Those are all the things folks were excited about during the workshops. Um, yeah, so folks were pretty excited about that. Um, for adaptation, participants shared information on how to deal with climate change specifically related to four different extreme weather events. These included heat, fire and smoke, severe rain and flooding, and then um, severe winter storms. So the concerns that came up the most often were uh, needing to stay home or indoors and not being able to get to school or work safely. Um, we also heard a lot about the potential loss of income due to extreme weather events and those impacts on getting around. And that was particularly prevalent with our Spanish-speaking uh, community members that we spoke with, who told us about having to make the decision between either getting to work or working in unsafe conditions or um, foregoing income for their families. We heard a bit about feelings of isolation and depression during extreme weather events, particularly from our older community members. And we also heard a lot about power outages, um, and particularly when those are not resolved quickly and they lead to um, food spoilage and unsafe conditions. Okay, so switching gears from folks who live, work, and play in Tuolton to folks who work at organizations who are lever pullers. Um, we held a series of focused meetings uh, to talk about speeding up greenhouse gas emissions reductions in Tuolton. Um, we had one meeting per focus areas. So we had kind of relevant folks who work in the buildings and energy space versus the transportation space, et cetera, in each of those meetings. And the goals of the workshops were to discuss best practices for emissions reduction strategies and barriers to reducing emissions. Discuss the roles of different organizations in decreasing our emissions and identifying information gaps and what helps stakeholders need to reduce their emissions. Uh, we had folks from utilities, state and local agencies, businesses, and nonprofits at these workshops. Um, and we engaged thirty-one individuals from across fourteen different organizations throughout the course of this process. Um, generally speaking, pub, public agency and utility stakeholders were very eager to engage with us. Um, we did have a harder time reaching the business community, so we anticipate trying, you know, a few different approaches to try to improve that moving forward. All right, so what did we learn? Um, there were definitely unique themes that came up in the focused workshops. Of course, buildings and energy is different from something like consumption. Um, but the four things that came up consistently across all the workshops were first, that the city can help with identifying information gaps, educating the public and amplifying existing programming to speed up the rate of emissions reduction in Tuolton. One example of this is that PGE and Northwest Natural both offer voluntary programs already where you can either um, help fund renewable energy projects or offset your emissions. And so the city could potentially play a role trying to increase enrollment in those programs. Second, uh, there's a strong need for relationship building to enhance partnerships, increase trust, and improve coordination between stakeholders. Um, there was a lot of, this is so great to talk to each other. We should do this more. So that was one of our, our takeaways there. Um, third, a one-size-fits-all approach to emissions reductions will not work. Strategies and actions must be equitable and tailored to the appropriate audiences and implementers. And then lastly, policy changes are needed to achieve greenhouse gas emissions reductions goal in, goals in Tuolton. Um, one example of this could be changing our code to require new multifamily housing to have EV chargers. Okay, um, so before we dig into all the strategies and the strategy side is a little scary, so we'll get there, I promise. Um, I wanted to tee it up by talking about our goal. So as you can see on the screen, our emissions reduction goal is net zero by twenty fifty. And what that means is limiting or at least doing our part to limit global warming to one point five degrees Celsius, which is considered the global tipping point. A little bit about why we picked that goal. Um, so this goal was selected by the steering committee, which consists of two councillors and, let's see, eight staff from across five departments in the city. Um, we selected it because it is, of course, the goal of the twenty fifteen climate, Paris Climate Agreement. Um, as a member of the Climate Mayor's Group, uh, Mayor, I believe it was actually Ogden, not Bubanix. So my apologies. Was it you? Okay. Awesome. The mayor signed a letter alon- uh, alongside a bunch of other mayors in the US, uh, supporting the target. Uh, this target is most commonly adopted by other cities who have completed climate action plans. And as I mentioned before, uh, it would prevent us from going over that one point five degree tipping point. Okay, almost a scary slide. Um, so the next phase of the project is quantitatively analyzing uh, emissions reduction strategies. So we can achieve that goal of net zero by twenty fifty. Uh, like I mentioned at the beginning, strategies will be measured in terms of their emission reduction potential as well as the cost per ton of greenhouse gases reduced. Wow, that's a mouthful. Um, analysis will, this analysis will allow the city to prioritize strategies based both on their emissions. I'm sorry, I just read that. I'm sorry, guys. Not a great day for me. We'll be able to uh, analyze ten to fifteen strategies um, through the course of this work here. All right. Here it is. Everyone's screen. Um, so we'll, we'll walk through each of these columns in just a moment, but just to tee this up, uh, the strategies included here represent best practices for emissions reductions and they were based on their selected based on their potential impact, um, our ability to measure progress on them and based on input from the community stakeholders and our steering committee. Um, they also are responsive to our greenhouse Um, they also are responsive to our greenhouse gas emissions inventory. Um, if you'll recall, our inventory found that building and energy use is our highest uh proportion of greenhouse gas emissions as a source, followed by transportation and then consumption. So that's why we've got strategies kind of clustered in those areas. Um, the strategies listed here are fairly broad, and so in the plan, we'll have more concrete actions that will help support each strategy. So we're looking at a pretty high level right now with these. Um, so we'll walk through these and then we can get to the discussion questions and get some feedback from you all. So, uh, for buildings and energy use, we've got strategies related to energy efficiency and conservation, one hundred percent greenhouse gas-free electricity supply, um electrification for new and existing buildings, and then also some carbon offsets. So, for example, uh, for the energy efficiency and conservation strategy at the top there, a couple of actions that could potentially support that might look like developing a building energy score program in Tuolatin and then hosting energy conservation workshops. So a little bit more concrete stuff like that. Um, for the urban form and land use category, we've just got two main strategies there. One is dense future development to decrease our reliance on single occupancy vehicles. Um, and then the other is related to urban and community forestry. So examples of actions that could support that community forestry strategy could include things like conducting a tree canopy study in Tuolatin to understand our tree cover, um, and then also updating our tree lists, so we have more species that are drought resistant um and/or native species, so that they'll thrive in the climate. Uh, moving on to transportation, we've got things like EVs, of course, renewable diesel, active transportation and transit in there. And so an example of a uh action that could help support EVs would be uh requiring affordable, public-facing EV charging in parking lots around town. So I'm sure everyone's seen the new Seasons One and a few others, but stuff like that. Um, and then lastly, in the consumption, food and goods category, we've got three different strategies. One's related to composting, another related to edible food waste and avoiding that, and then also road materials management. And so um, the great work that you all did to bring curbside composting here is an awesome first step, since that's coming to single-family homes. Um, and so we would want to eventually expand on that as service allows to bring it to multifamily and educate the community about how to compost if they've never done it before. So, that's all the lot. Um, we're only going to actually quantitatively and like really dig into ten of these strategies, well, ten to fifteen, but I'm gonna say ten to be conservative. Um, so the plan itself will include more strategies and actions than what what's just listed here, but we'll have hard numbers for the ten that we pick here. I'm gonna leave it there for now and we'll come back to it. Okay, so before I get to the discussion questions, um, for next steps, we'll do the analysis of the strategies that we land on, uh, and we'll write the plan. And then this spring, we will have a public or an opportunity for the public to weigh in on the plan and share it with you all as well. Uh, we'll incorporate feedback into the final final plan and present it to you all for adoption um early summer. And then following that, we'll begin implementation of this plan and then switch gears to the city's operational climate action plan that just focuses on, of course, city operations. So I'll go ahead and read the questions on the next slide and then turn it back over to the mayor, and I'll probably flip it back to that strategy slide, so everyone can see that. So for questions for discussion, with the goal of net zero by twenty fifty in mind, uh, what are your reactions to the strategies achieved, needed to achieve the goal? What strategies catch your interest and why? And which strategies you feel will be the most challenging to implement? And with that, I will end my presentation and hand it to the mayor.
All right. Go ahead, Sarah, with question number one. We'll just work question by question and let people ask questions or comments on each one. So, uh, I have number one, what are your reactions to the strategies needed to achieve the goal? Throw up your hands.
So I think they're all great strategies. Um, and there was a, there, there was some things that came to mind that I didn't see. I'm sure that they were discussed, um, as there is um lots of great people on the, on the committee. Um, but food consumption, as far as what we are consuming, um, I would have liked to see something on there regards to, um, you know, how the city can help education around how our food consumption um impacts the environment, or even have the council or city take a stance on like meatless Mondays for council meetings, something that we can do to sort of lead by example, where it doesn't have to be like an all or nothing, but um, so, and I know that's something very small as far as like meatless Mondays, but as a, an example of how we could um, just fi- to tie food consumption into um into that conversation. And also under that same umbrella, buying reusable goods. Uh, there's not a lot of places in Tuolatin where you can buy reusable goods. Um, and so is there something that we could do to bring in? Uh, and I saw that in the report too, where there was um some comments about um, you know, just having more access to um our programs where you could trade, sell, whatever. Um, and I think that the city could maybe do some creative things to to help out with those items.
Mind if I respond to that, Mayor? Quickly. Um, all, both great ideas definitely came up in our engagement work. And just to reiterate, the the things we've captured here are what's going to be easy for us to measure in terms of emission reductions. So the data is widely available from the state or other agencies. Things like um dietary choices or durable or used goods are a little bit harder to quantify. So they're gonna appear in the report as actions that we'll definitely recommend and put resources out there for folks. It's just harder for us to measure the year-over-year gains from those, so it's gonna be more of a narrative form.
And um, uh, thank you. Um, so with that, is there, so these are, these are measurable items. Are there, is there like a list of like low-hanging fruit to that? Um, to that same vein of like, these are things that we could easily implement that could be like quick wins that maybe are less measurable, but also maybe pretty easy to implement, easy.
I, I will say yes, we haven't pulled those out yet, but the quick wins category or fast start actions are something we're looking at prioritizing when, in the plan itself. So once we get to the action level and we have the more granular things we're going to recommend, we're going to label those with an identifier of things that either are really low barrier or really quick to do. And we're gonna look at doing those kind of on the onset of the plan. So, yes.
Professor Brooks.
I just want to thank you for your work. I'm very excited about this, obviously, and I've enjoyed working with you on the committee as well. Um, I just wanted to kind of highlight and ask the question about, um, when we're looking at what's gonna make the biggest difference too. So we talked about low-hanging fruit, which is great, but impact and why we have these measures, um, that we can really make these differences. And so one of the things that I found interesting and that I think is true is it seems like people are hungry to learn what they can do and work together about what they can do. So I just really appreciate how, first of all, I just want to say, appreciate how you did all of the, especially in-person work that you did, and it wasn't just the stickies. There's all those little dots on the pictures too. Those are all excitement pieces. Um, so that was just really well done. Um, I'm excited about the buildings and energy use just because it's the biggest piece. The biggest off-gassing problem that we have. And there was also the issue around the state tackling some of the transportation needs that we're gonna and the feds are going to as well. So what can we do in Tuolatin to make an impact to support those things? And so I'm just wondering if you could get a little bit into both of, into that dynamic of those two biggest um off-gassers and then how we strategize around buildings versus transportation and the work that other levels of government are doing.
Yeah, I think, um, obviously, yeah, the, the federal government's doing a ton on this, and it's trickling down to state and then lower than that. So, um, we're a part of the Urban Sustainability Directors Network, and that's a really amazing resource for us to stay up to date about what is going on at all the different levels and kind of coordinate with folks on that. And we're also a part of um two county-level groups to coordinate on sustainability as well. So to that piece, I think a lot of it's just kind of information tracking, right, and trying to figure out who's got this, who's got that, what are we doing? So, I don't know. Would you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think, you know, there's a lot of work already happening, right? We heard that over and over again. There's a lot of funding coming down. There's a lot of county and nonprofit and other local agencies doing a lot of this work. So just making those resources uh more widely known, connecting them to folks who are looking for them. We don't need to reinvent those processes. They exist. We just need to amplify them and maybe act as more of a convener in those roles. And then, uh, the plan's gonna be big, right? This is a long-term planning document, and it's pretty overarching when it comes to what it impacts. And so a lot of this will be just trying to capture the opportunities that we think are coming. And it'll be a little bit of a choose our own adventure into the order of those, depending on as funding becomes available or capacity exists. So um, we're gonna hope to identify those as best we can and then just be opportunistic in how we order them based on magnitude, level of effort, and outside opportunities. I think that gets there. Okay.
Thank you. And I also just, you know, um, so I'm, I am really excited especially about the buildings and energy use column and what the potential is of that and things being site-specific and collaborative with the other regional layers that we're gonna be dealing with. And then also this mindfulness around the fact that we live in a valley. So we deal with all that smoke when it happens. We deal with all that heat when it happens. And then we deal with all that river when it happens. So what can we do to be educational, not to scare people, but to um get people on board because it really is a need, and we're kind of in a vulnerable place here where we are. So I think that those pieces, and I think that you guys have been great with that. So I think those pieces are what I'm most excited about. Thanks.
Other comments are number one.
Thank you. You had mentioned that there, that you had two hundred and fifty people responded roughly thereabouts. Is that correct? Do you think that's enough response to get a good sample of the twenty-seven thousand population we have here? And then plus not having good response from business? Uh, I would like to know a little bit more about how you're gonna reach out to business and see what their inputs are gonna be, because obviously, this would be an impact to them on the bottom line, maybe on permitting, something like that. So we, how, what are the efforts to get more, more feedback?
So I'll take the business piece first. Um, we've been working with the Chamber of Commerce to try to uh, schedule a workshop to work through some of these strategies and talk with that community about how that impacts them and what their concerns and questions are. Um, in terms of timing, we've, we've kind of like waffled on it a little bit in terms of that, and we have decided that now that we have some potential strategies, um, it's easier to get somebody to react to something and kind of talk about a little bit more of a concrete thing than like some, before I think it was a little bit too um conceptual, because we were just talking about like the sciency side of it. Um, and folks weren't really interested in participating at that point. We've heard so much about the impacts of COVID on businesses and them being like, I don't have the time right now. So we're trying to be mindful of their time um as we bring them into this process too.
Because the plan seems to be laid out already, so waffling business, I would think that you'd want to be more aggressive, is simply because there'll be people who will work for these businesses, large or small. I'm not surprised that PG Republic and all these larger agencies would be interested in this. Um, they're connected to all of us. But it's a small business that'd be greatly impacted, and I would like to see more efforts around that, specifically a Chamber of Commerce, or maybe more public notices, or anything more to reach out to. Because they employ people who will be affected by this in their individual homes as well. Um, I would think it'd be a good source for numbers to see, okay, Lam employs, I don't know, a thousand people. Not to them, they probably give us good feedback from the people who work there and so on and so forth, if they work in this and live in this area. But I would be very interested in that. I just don't think two hundred and fifty people is enough yet, though the plan is set and it looks good, but it's just one more feedback from this.
Yeah, um, I would agree that two hundred and fifty was less than we were hoping for. We actually left the engagement window open for longer than we had intended and did a couple extra pushes at the end, more in-person, the flyers and A-frame signs were a reaction to actually the the lack of engagement we saw in the early month or weeks, I will say. Our consultant, kind of our engagement consultant, shared that that was something they'd been seeing in a lot of the projects they had been working on. So I'm not sure if there was just a lot of noise coming out of COVID or what maybe led to that, but we're definitely hoping for higher. Um, and then in terms of the business community, we actually have a planning meeting tomorrow with the chamber. And some of the feedback we heard early on when we engaged the business community was come back to us when you have actions to react to. It was very much educational and foundation setting early on, and we didn't have things like electrification or EV charging as necessarily like concrete things we were looking at. And so our hope is now that we have the draft strategies, we can go meet with the business community and get feedback on kind of these big buckets before we get more detailed in what the actions themselves look like to be responsive to what those needs are, whether we tweak the actions a little bit to meet their needs a little bit better, or whether we look at things like education and incentives to help close the gap.
Thank you.
Questions for number one.
Oh, what, first I just wanted to comment on the um, the plans of transportation that we know, you know, we can advocate, but that's about our limit here at a city level. Is that number two? Well, no, I was saying that we included it because um we feel like it's documenting our concern, so that's what we said about. Um, our reaction, I think they're great, and I think, um, when I look at um urban community forestry and carbon sequestration, I think that one overlaps a lot into the buildings and into our dense future. You know, we, we could look at vertical, you know, green spaces and other things, but I think that's a big part of this whole you know, the other strategies, and there's a lot of interaction.
Right, so number two, uh, what strategies catch your interest and why? Start off with this one on the one hundred percent renewable natural gas clean hydrogen supply. But my, given the current controversy over natural gas in residences and have spoken to Northwest Natural, uh, one of the folks in management on how they're gonna deal with this current controversy about, you know, buying natural gas in the home and changing the formula or venting. Um, so that, that piece, I think, might lob a little bit based on uh, what is coming out, like I understand states are going to actually outright ban natural gas appliances here pretty soon. Um, so, and just interested in, you know, if we're all gonna go electric, uh, where's all this electric gonna come from? Because right now it comes from natural gas, but that's not, you know, natural gas is in a facility, not in someone's home, but that one, um, to me, I'm gonna keep an eye on. Other folks. Castle Brooks. We're at two. And it's Castle Brooks and Castle Reyes.
Yeah, I um was, um, I thought that the urban, the canopy measure is very interesting. I think that like I've talked about before, um, I think there's confusion when we do development and we cut down trees or when trees get cut down. Um, and we celebrate that we've been a tree city for so long. Um, but we, I think that pulling back a little bit and seeing how has this changed over time, what do we need to do, what's working? I know there's a certain species of trees in our parks right now that is really vulnerable to what's been going on. We've lost a lot of, I think it's our big cedars. And um, and I know that when people see those going down and so what's, what's making it right now and what's robust? And I think that that's really good as, as far as um, planning what we're gonna keep. And it's interesting to me as we look at this too, there's obviously that competition a little bit around how do we develop in ways that are smart and then protect the environment that we're moving all these people into, right? So, um, if we want dense future development, um, I mean, it reduces sprawl, but um, But being coordinated around that, I think would be helpful to our planning department. And, and then some of the other pieces for what we could include, if we update our code, that makes it easier to live in this new environment that we're living in because it's coming, whether we do it or not, like what the mayor said, we're, there's going to be new electric charging around. And there's going to be, you know, to be able to buy certain cars and it's coming very quickly. So how do we coordinate it and how do we do it in a way that best serves our community's livability? And also that we're ahead of the curve, like we can get it in the homes while they're being built now. It costs a lot less money to put it in in advance. And how do we work with, I think what you were saying, businesses and having team members that would be excited to be putting in, I think of the plumbing school that we have here that I toured and they do all the, the teaching on the newest models of everything there and, and what different companies are coming out with. So how are we, you know, connecting and resourcing and educating around those? But those are the ones that were, stick out to me. Thanks.
Red.
Um, I think that what caught my interest definitely, it was the same thing as I was, other counselors are saying about what are the, what is the reaction of the majority of, you know, Tuolatin? When we say, hey, you got 250 responses from people here in Tuolatin? If I remember correctly, not all of them were from Tuolatin because this was, this survey was done in Viva Tuolatin and a lot of people that came there were not from Tuolatin. They're, they might have participated in the survey, but they're not from here. They just were coming to the event. So I'm wondering even that, if the hot, how accurate that number is of residents of Tuolatin. And so that was kind of like, so looking at the, all the, the strategies that we're trying to implement or want to, are suggesting to implement. I think all of it, definitely we need to see what really is Tuolatin, city residents of Tuolatin. And because it is kind of, it's going to really affect a lot of people, especially communities of color. Because a lot of them, number one, come from extreme poverty and buying a vehicle for the very first time might not be electric. Might be a vehicle that we already have used that we're like, okay, fine, we used gas and fossil. Now you go ahead, now you have to do that because, you know, we're telling you to do that after we've done it, you know? So I feel like it's unfair a little bit. So all that stuff needs to be, I think they, I, I don't know, I feel like, and I'm all, I also had a hard time understanding the difference between natural gas and gas that you actually use like gasoline. So I think a lot of people are having misunderstanding that as well. So I don't know, I think everything's going to be interesting to see how it's going to affect the real, like the people that have never really owned a vehicle before, but then they're buying vehicles like you, people of color mostly, I think. And also in food, they come from eating nothing but rice and beans and all of a sudden they finally get to buy meat. And we're telling them they can't eat that. So I don't know about the food consumption. I think dietary has to be really carefully, because then we're hurting the people that were also wanting to help. That just defeats the purpose of all these efforts that we're doing. Can you explain to me what avoidable edible food, avoided edible food waste means?
Yes.
I'm reading it differently in my head.
I think the classic example is you buy a bunch of bananas and you think, I'm going to eat six bananas this week. And you eat one banana and you have five bananas that you just throw in the trash. Like that's exactly what that is, just food that you don't end up eating.
But making sure you buy the exact amount of
The right amount.
The right amount, education.
And a lot of it has to do with how it's stored too. So to your point, yes, education about meal planning and storage, all of that stuff.
That's just it. Sorry.
Feedback. Any other comment, number two? That's for Saco.
Um, I'll do two and three because I think what, what, what interests me, but also I think might be really challenging is this idea of dense future development. And where, you know, like in my mind, I kind of pictured the Jetsons, right? Of like building up and having this, this robust like downtown area. But hearing from a lot of residents of what is Tuolatin? Why did I move to Tuolatin? I moved to Tuolatin because I have a single family home. And, and I maybe don't want to have a lot of apartments nearby or dense, dense residence. And, and so I think it, I think it, it's very interesting in the fact that I think that that's the way of the future and to have livable, workable, walkable communities. But also, you know, having this sense of identity of what Tuolatin is and why did people move here? And how we can balance that, what our, what our future needs are and our identity. And, and, and having kind of talked about before, having that small town feel, but having to adapt to this more urban setting. So I find it very interesting, but also probably really challenging for some of our, some of our residents here in Tuolatin.
So, here.
And I would piggyback on what Counselor Saco was saying because in, in my head, I thinking about residents who live up near the high school and things. There's, there's, I mean, you have to go into town or into Wilsonville to do anything. And so to me, dense development meant services that could be provided closer to where residents are living. And I don't see, you know, and so I'd like to see movement and in that direction. Because I, I do think if we could walk to the grocery store or bike or bring our little wagon or whatever it is, that more people would, would be willing to do that who live up away from services.
Segue into number three also, so two and three. Red.
This is two-ish, not really a strategy, but brought up the climate action. We're hearing communication is needed through all of this. One thing that's excellent to do with, there are so many, you know, we have federal, state, so there's you know, solar panels or whatever. So you could have those people there that, you could have the certain people there to help with the nation's needs.
Other comments for number three besides the, that had the same trigger in my head, Counselor Saco about density, some people love it, some people hate it. And we're all, you know, metros tallying the benefits of density and, you know, urban cores. But some people, that's not what they bought into and that's not what they desire. And how do you change those kind of attitudes? Or do you, and you just don't implement that part of your climate action plan? That's a president, Saco was crap.
I just wanted to point out, I read a couple things, listened to podcasts about the carbon offsets that I like that you use the word verified because there's, there's some bad players out there. Very glad you used the word verified.
Let's talk about strategic. On transit?
I, well, I just, I, that's, those will be our challenges, the transit. Those are things, that's beyond our control. All we can do really is advocate and we do that best we can. But, you know, Triment's got limited dollars, limited drivers. And I also noticed in that report that a, a big concern about transit, especially with our youth, is the safety issue. And I know Triment's hired more people, but I mean, I admit it's scary to get on a max train, the west train's fine, but the next train can be a little frightening sometimes.
Council Brooks for number three or two?
Okay, well, I did do two, but I will say I like the fair idea too. And I would do want to also say that just with the work with the Tuolten Sustainability Network and talking at the Chamber and Rotary, there's been a lot of interest from business owners that I've been talking to. The other thing that I think is really important has been engaging with the climate group over at Tiger Tuolton School District. And there's a lot of energy in that realm too. So I think those two are good examples of sort of that. And I think the climate fair, I have an easy time imagining that. I think when we're talking about buildings, it's what I'm most excited about. It's also what's the most permanent that we have. So that's about retrofitting and that's about thinking of innovative ways. This idea of white roofs and different things, I mean, I want to keep learning because I think some of it sounds much more daunting than some of the fixes actually can be. But to be shifting things over that are already built, it's not like we can make densification happen in our suburban neighborhoods. So I'm not afraid of that, but I do think that we want to be able to, you know, capture as much as we can. And when that's the biggest offset, that's the biggest challenge for me is how does that happen with so much already built out? So I am just curious about it, but that what is what I think's the challenge. I see it a little bit differently. I don't think we have the money in the city of Tuolton to build what the Jetsons have, no offense. But, but I do think that, you know, like with the scooters, when people have the opportunity to see what it would be like to do a live-work thing or whatever, if we can make some of those types of things happen, that people will use it. So that's my, he says, thank you. But it's really good work.
Can you define, just for people who aren't in this every day, the difference between active transportation and transit transportation? Sometimes this gets a little wonky, so.
Sure, yeah.
People will watch it.
I would say active is more about just using your physical body to get around biking, scootering, walking, that kind of thing. And then transit, obviously you, you might do multimodal and you'll walk to the bus stop or you'll bike to the bus stop. But being on a shared vehicle that is operated by Triment in the sixth instant.
Ride connection.
Or ride connection, correct.
President Pratt. Got it.
I noticed when you, you talked to the stakeholders that they talked about financing. And I just wondered if you could give a couple of examples of what that would be. Went off the top of your head.
Well, when we talk to the general public, we talk, we hear things like the cost of upgrading electrical panels to accommodate solar, you know, connections or accommodate vehicle charging and that is, can be prohibitively expensive, right? Like maybe the solar panels themselves pencil out, but when you add in $3,000 for a panel, it tips it to be a little bit more of a burden for the family to do. Similarly, for small businesses, we heard things like low-interest loans could be interesting for some retrofits or just, just ways to remove the barriers to make that pencil out a little bit better. So there was, there was some very specific, like site-specific things that came up, but generally it was just.
It's like the city could maybe do something, but a lot of it would, was going to be advocating and educating about state programs.
Yeah, or connecting to ones that already exist, like PGE does have offsets for panel upgrades and yeah.
I also would like, after listening to Council Reyes's concerns, we didn't really cover the environmental justice efforts that much. So I would just like for you to talk about maybe some potential strategies for folks that need support around clean air, cool air, et cetera. I know there's programs already starting, so you could speak a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, one idea that came up kind of similar to Counselor Pratt's question that she just asked actually is the idea of, you know, like when there's a smoke event, everybody wants those air filters and needs them, right? And they're gone. So potentially the city stocks up on a lot of those in the off-season and we have those available to those households that really need them when the time comes. So they're free of cost or low cost and available. So something like that.
I've already heard of like programs that there are being stood up around air conditioning units that are being stood up around people having more safety. I imagine that also probably get involved too. So those types of things, I think it's really important to keep that in the bottom line when we're looking at them. And what kind of things we can plug into around our environmental justice work. Yeah, just the challenge, I think one of the big challenges is going to be, we've seen it with the waste products and everything, is how to, how to make things available for people that rent, you don't own the property. You need to be a big focus, you need to help people, especially as we move into winter housing.
I just want to reemphasize getting good feedback from our residents in Tuolatin. 250 people is not nearly enough, in my opinion, to, to quantify a four-point plan right now that has already been laid before us and all the various objectives for that. So what are you going to do different to try to get more response, more feedback from local Tuolton residents? To see if we're all interested in conservation. So I just want to ask these questions. I didn't see anything in there with conservation. I know conservation is also, you know, water and saving resources. I would like to see a little bit more of conservation on things that don't require so much maintenance. Because anytime a motor, a person has to go out and fix something or retool something, even in landscaping, you know, we like to plant plants that don't need to be pruned. Plant it, it stays in its spot, no one has to go out there and do anything more. There are many low-hanging fruits already that we can probably incorporate with our own buildings. The first steps take potentially. But I would like to see more representation of opinions of Tuolton residents on what they want. And if this, this just numbers decided now, in my opinion.
Yeah. To your point, I think, you know, when this plan started, I won't say COVID was waning, but we were in the final days of COVID. But there was still some concerns. So a lot of what we did was online or based primarily online. In the next upcoming round of engagement, I would see us being out in the community a little bit more, trying to just interact, like go find people where they are and interact with them a little bit better. When we did the A-frame signs in the parks and we did the flyers at the local businesses, we saw a pretty big uptick on that. And so I think we need to just do a little bit more of that work and then potentially draw out the timeline a little bit more if we're not getting the numbers we need to, to continue to try new things and, and reach the people. Because it is important. I completely agree. I mean, that engagement is a huge emphasis for us. We want to make sure that the community can see themselves in the plan. Otherwise it's not going to work.
Yeah, yeah, I totally agree with Counselor Gonzalez. 250 is better than a thousand people. So I'm thinking like, wow, we're, we do need more voices out there from the residents of Tuolatin. So one idea, maybe send a postcard to every resident in Tuolatin and say, hey, these are things that we are looking into and we really need your feedback. And yeah, working with the Chamber of Commerce is good, but I always have to say, when you're at the Chamber of Commerce, you're actually a member. So you have to pay a fee. A lot of us, the people of color or communities that are not accustomed to joining the Chamber of Commerce are not hearing their voices. These businesses are not being heard because they're not part of the Chamber of Commerce. So I think that's important and those are like the micro businesses, you know, the people that actually have two, three people in there we're working for them and it will affect them because, you know, we're asking, they're renting, they're leasing some properties. So I think that's, that's another way, but definitely reach, try to reach out as many people from Tuolatin as possible because it's important for them to know that it's coming. And, and one of the things that I've always noticed is like, when did this happen? Why everybody's upset at us? We're like, we talked to you, we sent you this three years ago. And it's like, they react late. So I feel like if we make it an effort as much as we can to do it now, then it will be very, it will avoid those, those people that say, well, I didn't know anything about it. Now you're asking me to do this. So.
Yeah.
Some more representation that will be really, really helpful.
Comments, questions for Eddie or Nick?
Oh, just, Counselor Reyes, don't you have a new group of Spanish-speaking businesses?
They did, they, they went to that, but it was, but again, I, I can tell you, there were probably about two businesses that were from Tuolatin out of that whole, that whole group. And they were all from Wilsonville or even, even Gresham and Portland. So they weren't really like Tuolatin, like. that whole group, and they were all from Wilsonville or even, even Gresham and Portland, so they weren't really like Tuolatin, like people, I mean, I, I mean, I know a lot of people here from Tuolatin and can tell you who was there that actually made, does business here, brings in employees here, so yeah, they, they, they went there to that on this network.
Okay, that's different tonight on this one.
Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you.
Yeah, really helpful.
All right, uh, we've got about five minutes left, so we'll postpone the council roundtable and do that at the end of our council meeting. Um, looking at the agenda tonight, the budget allegiance is gonna be led by Councillor Saco, the real Councillor Saco. Yeah, uh, any questions on the consent agenda, those four items? All right, uh, we have no proclamations, so we don't have to worry about that. Uh, we've got two special reports and remember, after the city council meeting, we're gonna have a development commission meeting. So at this point, I'll go ahead and adjourn the work session, take a five-minute break, and we'll start back up at seven o'clock with our council meeting.